Just wondering if we're good, we should be good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five Portsmouth Town Council Meeting. Uh, you have entered through one of our exits. If there is an emergency, we will please, uh, exit out either the door you came in, the one that's behind your left shoulder or the one behind Mr. Reese. We'll go across the street to the school department and wait for further instructions from our first responders. If you are now all, please rise, join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in harm's way.
One second.
I'm quite relieved it's due to the flag, we die as kings of America, in the Republic in which stands one nation, under, uh, individual, but for justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Adam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Ms. Blank, here. Ms. McDowell?
Here.
Ms. Patton, here. Mr. Payaro?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
I am here, thank you very much. Uh, I have no present as executive this agenda this evening. Uh, we have our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We have our minutes from the eleven ten meeting of two thousand and twenty five. Any changes or do we approve to all? Good to approve?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have our town administrative report. Mr. Rayner, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm counsel, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, with respect to the fiscal year twenty five audit, that process is approaching its final stage. Uh, draft financial statements are expected within the next two weeks, and we are on schedule to meet the December thirty first filing deadline. Um, our last recycling event, it'll be an e-waste event is approaching. Uh, that will be, uh, that's for this calendar year. And that will be Saturday, December thirteenth at the Portsmouth High School from nine to twelve in the morning. Uh, this is an event that's open to all Rhode Island residents, uh, so no stickers required. And we will have a truck, uh, stationed at the Prudence Island Transfer Station beginning one week prior to the event to collect e-waste, uh, that they may have and transported to the high school. On Friday, November fourteenth, I attended the Visiting Nurse Home and Hospice Organization. They had their seventy fifth anniversary celebration and luncheon, and I did that on behalf of the town. Uh, it was an opportunity to recognize their seventy five years of service to Aquinac Island communities and thank them for the important and compassionate service that they provide all Portsmouth residents. On November nineteenth, the police department was recognized by AAA Northeast with the AAA Gold Award for Outstanding Achievement and Continued Commitment to Traffic Safety. That Portsmouth was the only municipal law enforcement agency in Rhode Island to receive the gold standard designation this year, marking the department's seventh gold award and their fourth consecutive, uh, gold award. Uh, in addition, Officer Mark Broshu was honored as the Traffic Safety Community Award winner for his exceptional dedication to traffic safety and DUI enforcement over the past year. So congratulations to the entire, uh, police department for this well-deserved recognition. Well done, chief. Um, with regard to, uh, the draft, uh, Disc Golf MOU, uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee met on the twentieth and had a chance to look over the draft MOU framework. I'm waiting for their feedback, and once I have it, I'll make any needed adjustments and prepare the final draft for the December eighth Town Council meeting. And I'll be sure to document that the document reflects all the points that were included in the council's approved motion. And lastly, Town Hall will be closed this coming Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. Uh, the transfer station will be closed on Thursday and will reopen with regular hours on Friday and Saturday. There will be no curbside collection on Thursday, so the Thursday routes will be collected on Friday, and the Friday routes will be collected on Saturday. So on behalf of the entire staff, we wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. That's, thank you.
Mr. Rayner? Mr. Reese?
Mr. Rayner, I do have a, I do have a question. Um, uh, and during your report, you discussed, uh, an MOU, uh, in relation to the, uh, Disc Golf.
Correct.
Um, the motion and vote at the October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting was develop an NO MOA, which is not the same as an MOU.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So what I did, the motion was to establish an MOA with, uh, an organization that doesn't exist yet. So uh, the way it was crafted, it was an MOU, uh, crafted with the people who have established themselves as uh, people raising the money to develop the course.
Who?
And then the MOA would be with whatever league gets established, uh, and that's all addressed in this draft. And there'll be a letter to the council as well. And then there would be an MOA with whatever league or leagues come forward, uh, to use the field through Civic Rec.
But the, the MOA would have to be done before any shovel, any, anything hits the ground or anything's installed, correct?
Uh, well, this will be up to you, but the, the MOU is with the organization that's raising money. It's hard to legally bind them you know, to, to raising the money. So it was, it was really kind of nuanced in how we could do this, uh, and and fulfill the intent in all the points that were in the motion, which are included in, uh, the structure of a potential MOA, uh, which would be, as I said, with any organization that forms themselves into a league, but there is no Disc Golf League to do an MOA with. So, uh, it's kind of a two-part, and you'll see that when you get that. It's, it's, it was not ignored at all. Uh, it is an MOA, but an MOU with people raising money, an MOA for, uh, your approval, uh, and, uh, to be signed by any organization that wishes to form themselves into a Disc Golf League that would use the Portsmouth Disc Golf Course.
And I also have one other question. Why was the council not given a preliminary copy of this, just so we could see the progress that's being made?
Uh, it's administrative.
I think that's, that's a piece of, you know, that's a piece of knowledge I, I'd like to have. I don't know about anybody else.
Well, uh, nothing's being hidden. It's.
No, no, I'm not accusing you of hiding anything. I'm just saying, so we can, you know, look at it.
It's, right now, it's, it's, the motion was to present an MOA to the council by the end of the year. To draft that MOA, uh, there was staff work that needed to be done, and we solicited the input of the Parks and Rec Committee. That, that input has not been received.
Did they write, did they write this, uh, document?
The chair, uh, the vice chair and the Parks and Rec Director provided input, which we turned around into, uh, the MOU slant MOA given back to the Parks and Rec Committee for their comment. Uh, and once that's received, uh, we'll incorporate it as applicable and turn it around to the council for, uh, you by the end of the year as was the motion. But this is just staff work.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Um, is, is it possible to get a copy of that to the council members?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, just be aware that it is, it's, it's a draft that was, that, the I'm gonna, but I'll certainly be, uh, I'm sure it's a part of their backup, but I'll make sure it's distributed to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Rayner? Mr. Rayner, thank you very much. Onto appointments and resignations. We have, uh, one appointment to the Dog Park Committee.
Mr. President, uh, the motion is to appoint Patricia Cretian to the Dogs and Parks Committee.
Second.
Park Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have Old Business, which is a accepted draft letter to the ESB, EFsb regarding resident protections during South Coast Wind Construction. Uh, this is a letter we asked, uh, staff to create to hopefully be allowed to be added into the record of the ESSB for any potential construction from South Coast Wind.
Correct. Uh, as you stated, uh, we were tasked to, at the last meeting, to draft an EFsb le- or letter to EFsb about the potential construction noise impacts uh, of a, a potential South Coast Wind project. So the draft letter does focus on protecting nearby residents, uh, during the noisiest phases of work, especially during the overnight, uh, drilling operations that can't be paused mid-process. Uh, it asked the Energy Facility Sightings Board EFsb to consider adding reasonable abutter relief measures as a condition of approval. Uh, one example is based on the council's, uh, direction, uh, and that is a temporary hotel accommodation, uh, for directed or for directly affected households during those, uh, unavoidable periods. So the draft is presented as requested for your review and approval, uh, before it gets sent.
Any questions from counselors on the, on the letter? Any corrections or changes? Is there, Ms. McDowell?
No, I'd just like to say it's a, um, the letter definitely is a well-written letter which expresses our sentiments, and I'm hoping that, um, FSb takes note and considers everything that's been written. Thank you.
Mr. Gleason.
I also agree that the letter, excuse me, was put together fine, uh, great job, and I would make a motion to approve the draft as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have Old Business number two, which is our, uh, monthly finance report. Ms. Marsden.
Good evening, Mr. President and Honorable Counsel. Attached is the budget update for month ending October, two thousand and twenty five. As of October thirty first, the town was four months or thirty three point three percent into fiscal year twenty six, with general fund revenues at thirty three point zero five percent of budget, supported largely, largely by real estate transfer fees, tax collections, state aid and interest income. General fund expenditures were at thirty three point nine percent of budget with key drivers, including road paving projects, second quarter civic support disbursements and debt service payments. While October does reflect a small operating deficit, this trend is consistent with the prior years, and it is expected to correct in November with the receipt of second quarter tax payments. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Marsden? No motion to receive and place on file?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Hey, next up, we have our continuing saga of Disc Golf. Um, I'm gonna add. Well, that's just part of the town finance report. If you want to talk about the school finance report weekend.
I thought maybe some of us.
No, it's just added for information purposes only.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna ask our town solicitor to weigh in on, I know there's been a lot of conversation as to how can this come back again? Um, that it's already been voted on. It's already been a settled project. Uh, so I'm gonna ask our solicitor to weigh in why he believes that it can go on. I have some comments on that as well. The first step in this discussion would be a vote for reconsideration. That vote for reconsideration fails, then we will not be discussing Disc Golf this evening. Jill, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think, you know, we, we touched on this when this was, um, discussed in the last meeting. I, I think there's a sort of common misperception that, that there are some rules around reconsideration that, that perhaps don't apply, um, and then certainly I don't think apply in this case. Um, I, I'll try to just briefly outline the, the structure that, that Robert's Rules provides for this type of action. Um, there, uh, I, I think it was noted that, that traditionally, uh, and perhaps that's the case with this council, that a, a person voting uh, on the prevailing side could then move a motion to reconsider. I don't think that is, um, the case here. That, uh, applies only in cases where something is reconsidered at the same meeting or, uh, what they call in Robert's Rules, the same session. So if a meeting is continued, it's not the same meeting technically, but they call it the same session. Uh, in this case, uh, you know, we are at a subsequent meeting, actually a couple of meetings subsequent. Um, and I, and I think the prevailing principle that applies, and, and you can find this throughout Robert's Rules, um, i- it's shorthanded as, as the, the freedom, you know, quote, the freedom of each new session. So one council can't bind a future council, and that applies even to the, the seven of you, um, uh, you know, uh, with one vote, saying that you can never vote on a matter again. Uh, the simple example I'll, I'll use is, uh, that you pass a budget every year as you must, uh, but that doesn't prevent you from, um, amending that budget when you find out your revenues are in, or maybe there was a windfall from the state, or maybe a, a deficit in school funding. Whatever that may be, you're allowed to go back at a subsequent meeting and, and reopen the budget for discussion, re, repass it, um, and, and make changes to it. So there are a number of ways, and that's the, the sort of most obvious example, but there are a number of ways that, um, a motion can be revisited. Uh, the door is never locked. Uh, uh, and, and you have the right to, to reconsider. Uh, and there's, there's different ways to do that. There's moving something that was tabled off the table. There's, um, uh, you know, moving something that was moved to a committee out of the committee, you can force it back to the council for a vote. Uh, but in this case, uh, looking at the amendment that's proposed, or sorry, the, uh, the, the agenda item that's proposed, uh, a motion to rescind, uh, a motion to reconsider, uh, it's all sort of the same thing, uh, uh, whether you call it repeal and null, amend, reconsider, rescind. Uh, what you're doing is you're taking that vote that happened two meetings ago and then deciding whether or not to, um, to undo the action that you did. So, um, I, I think the only other quick point I'll make is that, uh, if, if there was, uh, you know, some binding action that the town had taken since then, um, then obviously you would probably be advised to take into account any liability that might accrue to the town. So if you had entered into a contract, then you decide to undo that vote, you might have liability under that contract. At this point, as the administrator, um, just, just discussed at length, um, we, we are not at, at this point, I don't really think we've, we've proposed a contract. It's, it's an MOU or an MOA at best. Um, but in any case, that's not, that's not in place yet. So I don't think you have any contractual liabilities, uh, uh, to consider today, but, uh, uh, that is essentially the, the gist of it. You have the right, as you would with any matter, uh, to come back and, and revisit that.
Right. Appreciate your, um, legal view of that. The, the one part I will disagree with you is that we gave a, an organization the go-ahead to start fundraising to build this course. So I believe that's where work has been done, and you and I will disagree on that. But, Mr. Payaro.
Mr. President, I'll completely agree with you. I, I, I have a litany of issues that, uh, 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 for those, I'm working off the same exact book that the, uh, our solicitor is working off, but I will clearly state that your fa- your uh, argument for reopening a case based on the budget is a completely wrong fallacy. There being a budget shortfall is considered new information that we did not know when we took the initial action of a budget. If, let's say, for instance, revenues from the state change, that information is new information that does allow the council to revisit under consideration. So to state that it's just based on, there's no new information, there's no new evidence, the only thing that this presentation that's in the backup expands on, on comments that were already made in the four previous meetings that this issue's already come up in.
Could I, uh, uh, let me just respond, Councilman Payaro. Uh, again, the, the new information, um, standard, I guess, is part of a motion to reconsider at the same meeting or session. Uh, there is no new information requirement if a council wants to come back. Now, I use the budget example because it's one that people are familiar with, not because.
Yeah, I, I, I was.
It's an ad metaphor. Uh, but, but the, the new information, you don't have to have any new information. You can just have changed your minds. That's, that's, that's the only standard. If you want to reconsider it, you can reconsider it. Now, is that, is that fickle and is that, uh, difficult to, 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 you know, uh, to take into account when you're trying to do business with a town? Absolutely. But that's why you cement these things into contracts, so that everyone has their legal rights established in writing. It's understood. It's binding on both sides. Right? We're not at that point with this case, and, and, and the new information standard just does not apply in this case. If it was the same meeting and twenty minutes later, somebody walked in and said, I just found the smoking gun about, you know, the secret of Disc Golf, yeah, that might be new information. You could revote it right then, but that's not what we're considering today.
I'll have more questions. I'll leave the door open. Hey. Ms. Patton?
I just have a, a quick question. Um, earlier, uh, Mr. Rayner said that there is no organization yet, and you're saying that there is an organization born.
There is a Portsmouth Disc Golf Association that has started to fundraise monies for the Disc Golf Course. Whether that is a five oh one C three as of yet or not, I don't know. But there are individuals have begun to for, to fundraise for this.
And if I can clarify what I meant, Councilman Patton, there's no Disc Golf League organization to do an MOA with. Um, I wrote the MOU raising golf, and I think in the ensuing period from September eighth to now, uh, they have formed themselves into an organization. I don't know if it's a five oh one. I don't know what, but it's kind of it just didn't seem logical to make a binding, uh, MOA with an organization that is just raising money. They're not the playing organization. They're not a league, which is what it appeared that the motion was focused on. But again, you'll, I'll, I'll forward this to you tomorrow. Be happy to take comments, and we'll obviously be discussing how the A's as well.
Yeah, I actually have a copy of the MOU that was put together. I was at the committee meeting.
Oh, thank you. So I, I, I put this as, I will put this in more in line with the organization that started as the Dog Park Committee. That the council decided that, hey, we're gonna get you a spot for a dog park. Go ahead and start fundraising. And they did, and we found them a part, a spot for a dog park, and now we have a dog park. If this would have come back four or five times and we pulled the rug out from underneath them and said, forget it, no more dog park, and they had raised all this money. Now they've gone out and raised money under false pretenses, and it puts them in a bad light, and it puts us in a bad light. Um, I don't see anything in the information that has been presented that hasn't been presented before. There's a lot of information in this backup that is potentially, no, actually, no, I'm not gonna go that far. At this point, if a counselor would like to make a motion to reconsider, we can have that vote, and then we can go forward if that vote were to pass. Ms. McDowell?
Might just have some comments to make before I make that motion, uh, Mr. President. Before I begin, I want the proponents of Disc Golf at the Glen, the opponents of Disc Golf at the Glen, my fellow counselors and the Portsmouth Times to note that what I'm about to say, note it well. I am not against Disc Golf in any way, shape or form. What I am against is a Disc Golf Course at Glen Park. I am willing to work with any group to explore other venues in Portsmouth to host a Disc Golf Course. On November twelfth, during my office hours at Town Hall, I was approached by a member of a citizens' group. The citizen proceeded to show me information that they had put together in response to the recent vote of the council to allow Disc Golf at Glen Park. Much of that information is presented in the slide presentation that they prepared for backup for this agenda. I went over the research thoroughly with the citizen and was even more convinced that my initial vote against Disc Golf at the Glen was the right vote. After reviewing this research, I was asked by the representative that I request to rescind the vote taken on nine eight, two thousand and twenty five. I explained that the vote could only be brought back by a council member who voted in favor of it. The representative proceeded to show me the remarks that our solicitor made at the meeting on October twenty seventh, saying that any council member could ask for the vote to be reconsidered. The citizen that I, I told the citizen that I would reach out to our solicitor for clarity on this, and if, in fact, it was confirmed that any council member could request to bring it back, that I would do it on behalf of the citizens' group, with the hope that all this new information, which I, I tend to disagree with our president, that there is new information, could help other council members see the adverse effects of Disc Golf at a, a Disc Golf Course at the Glen and possibly see how this whole process was flawed from the onset. There have been concerns raised about bringing this issue back for a vote. One of the issues pertains to our democratic processes. It has been stated by the League of Women Voters that bringing back this issue is, quote, "an attempt to weaken or sidestep the democratic process" and, quote, "raise questions about the stability of the democratic process," unquote. Unfortunately, I couldn't disagree more. Our democracy is weakened or sidestepped when the processes that are put in place do not function as they should. Committees who bring issues such as these to be acted upon must operate transparently and according to the rules so that citizens are aware of important issues and have the opportunity to fully engage in this democratic process. An important step that was sidestepped, as evidenced by the opera request submitted by an abutter for minutes, agenda, et cetera. The democratic process is further diminished when new factual information is dismissed because, quote, "we already voted." Or when misinformation is allowed to permeate the discussion without being called what it is, in some cases blatant lies. Democracy should be defended and preserved, and that is the reason I am bringing this issue back for a vote. And just for the record, in July of two thousand and ten, the Portsmouth Town Council banned all golfing at the Glen in an overwhelming majority vote, five to one. I submitted that article as well as backup, but apparently it did not appear as backup. I'm sure citizens will address the new information that is reflected in the backup presentation. At this time, I move that we rescind the council's vote on nine eight, two thousand and twenty five, allowing an eighteen-hole golf disc cor- uh, whole Disc Golf Course at Glen Park.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Any counselors wish to comment on motion? I, I, I will say that many pieces of your motion are, or your speech are untrue. The democratic process and the process which the committee went through started twelve months ago, had multiple meetings, and the folks who applied for an opera request were at our meeting and subsequent meetings. In terms of Disc Golf, there was only one piece of minutes that were missing, and that was from a meeting that had just happened. So it hadn't been even approved yet by the committee. So when I look back on the minutes, the only discussions on Disc Golf, mi- meeting, media, meeting, meeting, minutes that were missing were from their August fourteenth, I think, meeting. The new information that was presented and misinformation that was presented goes on both sides. And the fact that we're here again to discuss something that is a two-year trial for a Disc Golf Course on forty-plus acres of Glen property, don't say no because it is forty-plus acres. Thank you. And to equate Disc Golf with banning of golf in two thousand and ten, which is white golf balls on our playing fields where kids could break an ankle is completely inappropriate. So at this point, I will take a vote unless, Mr. Payaro, you have something else?
Yeah, no, I, 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 I do have a couple of comments, and this kind of goes to, um, I, 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 I will have to say that, Mr. President, you're a hundred percent right. I was gonna start with saying that, yes, uh, the comments made by Councilwoman McDowell would be considered dilatory if we're really going through Robert's Rules of Order. Um, I, I'm kind of getting the feeling, having been on this council for a little over a year, that if we were to state what our general MO is, it's that we continuously kick the can. Um, we did it with curbside. We delayed. It was a delayed tactic, which, again, this is another delay tactic. Uh, until legal action was threatened upon us, and then we blamed the administration for implementation issues. We did a last meeting with the senior center lease where we wanted to delay because of inability to understand track changes. Uh, and I would say most of us probably had our opinions changed, or those that were on the fence by action threatened upon us by Trish Community Housing, because they were gonna go move forward with the agreements that they have in moving forward with the project that was already in hand. We did this with the Housing Authority, where we beat our partners with questions, which I have no problem with, but we made it seem like the work was nefarious. We did it again with nonpartisan elections, where we continually brought the issue back up until we, until it, I, no, no. It's germane because I said we're kicking the can. Please.
I understand, but I don't think all those things are on the agenda.
They're not.
No, but they're on, they're on a.
They're on a, the topic of what we're doing as a council.
Well, that's, that's your opinion.
Congratulations. Yes, I know. So outside of the established process that forth by the charter, we are doing nonpartisan elections in the elec- uh, next credit. We took credit for the town administrator's budget, well, town administrator's budget following taxes, but we really didn't do anything other than move a couple of thousand dollars here and there. Um, and the only thing we truly did was take money out of the rainy day account, our reserve fund, to put into the pension liabilities when those already are planned in place. So we just continuously kick the can. And we've done absolutely nothing. We take one step forward towards progress. We take ten steps back. And the only thing that this council, I'm gonna say the council as a whole, because we act as a whole, is interested is the semblance of action while promoting regression. And that's become the mantra. And that's become the mantra of what I'm afraid to say is now there's a do-nothing council. So, Mr. President, I urge my colleagues to vote no on this, and let's just move past this. It's already been decided.
Any other counselors wish to comment? Hearing none. Mr. Gleason?
The only thing for clarification, you had asked for a vote first to proceed with rescinding, and I think voting no would be something that Mr. Piero would do in that circumstances. What the motion I've heard is we are going to retake our vote as to whether we're approving.
No, we're, we're, we're rescinding the action that was taken. So rescinding that action would be, yes, a vote to say we're, we're not going to allow disc golf course at the Glen.
So if you want to have that rescinded, you would vote in the affirmative?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just the opposite of what you would think. Bring it to your attention. Not like we're voting on the original motion.
I, I, a, a yes vote would be to rescind the prior action. So a yes vote puts us back at square one with regard to disc golf.
Correct. Okay, just so we're all clear on that.
Would reverse the four to three vote from September 8th? Any other comments or questions, Ms. Mike?
It's unfortunate that we are covering this again. I feel we've certainly heard a lot from the people of Portsmouth, and the only reason I took this role was to support the people and do what their request is. Um, I felt the best path forward was the probationary period to allow them to succeed or fail um, on, by their own volition, and it allows for the attempt to be made, it to be revisited when we can see the actual impact and, and the causes and the effects. And let us look at it again then, um, because it is a low impact physically to the Glen of, of digging up or, uh, if things needed to be removed. Let's give the people of Portsmouth a chance. Let's attempt, but and I feel that we need to give it a shot. If it doesn't work, it can come, it'll go right back.
You have others? Ms. Patton?
Yes. So are we voting or is this getting open?
We are revoting, because if we don't rescind the vote, there is no reason to have the discussion.
Okay.
There's no need to reconsider it if this, if we're not going to reconsider it. To rescind a vote. Mr. Katzman, I would like to invite you up to make a comment, but if I do, I open up a
I'm only speaking to the parliamentary posture, the, the, the nature of the motion and a possible open meetings act violation. I will.
And don't discuss anything about disc golf.
I will not, I am not going to address disc golf at all.
Stick to parliamentary procedure.
That's exactly what I'm doing. So, uh, the minutes, I'm sorry, the agenda notes that, uh, states that this is a reconsideration. The motion, however, was to rescind. So this is not, this motion is not properly noticed and is in violation of the Open Meetings Act if you proceed forward. There is a difference between a motion to rescind and a motion to reconsider. A, a motion to reconsider, Mr. President, as you know, has all of the features that you're aware of. It can only be made by someone on the prevailing side and so on, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised 12th Edition, Section 37:10, if you want to look it up. So I simply say that it has to be a motion to reconsider as noticed, which can't be made, uh, according to Robert's Rules, other than by a member who voted with a prevailing side. And there's also time limitations, which, when was the vote taken?
September 8th.
We're probably past the window. Could this come back before the council in the form of a motion to rescind? Yes, but not tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless you don't mind an Open Meetings Act.
Yep. I will refer to our solicitor on that.
Uh, I've, I've, I was asked to review the agenda item. Reconsideration has a plain English meeting, not just a Robert's Rules meeting. We are reconsidering that vote, and so I deemed that as an adequate description for the purposes of the Open Meeting Act. This is an opportunity for this council to reconsider. Um, I think the motion is the correct motion, the motion to rescind, which is, um, as we've discussed, perfectly in order and one of the many ways you can respond to reacting on a prior action.
But, but, Mr. Solicitor, to Mr. Katzman's point, if we're using Robert's Rules, which is the established parliamentary procedure of the council, there are two different motions. Rescind has a whole definition, reconsideration has a whole section.
Correct.
There are two very different motions. The words are not interchangeable, and I think that's what Mr. Katzman's point was.
I, I don't, I don't disagree that they both have meanings within Robert's Rules. I think the motion that's on the floor right now is a motion to rescind, which is proper at this point.
But it is not what is on the, on the agenda. It says reconsideration, not rescind.
Which in plain English is what you are all doing right now. You are reconsidering that.
Yes, but on the Robert's Rules of Order, a motion to rescind and a motion to reconsider are two different motions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask it a different way. If, as the agenda item was written as a reconsideration of prior council vote, the motion was made to upheld, uphold the vote that was taken on September 8th, that would be, in your thought process, Mr. Katzman, also out of order.
A motion to affirm a prior vote?
Yes.
Is also not noticed, probably also unnecessary, but, but a, a motion in any form. So in plain English, okay. However, Robert's Rules of Order is very widely known by very many people, and you are a formal legislative body, policymaking body, and people know that the Charter says you must have, must have, shall adopt parliamentary rules that govern your body, and the rules that you have adopted are Robert's Rules. So thi- this is known. People follow along. If you want to let it slide, I mean, that's not the best. And as I said, the matter can come before the council as a form of a motion to rescind, but not tonight.
Well, the motion has been made and seconded.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Appreciate it. Thank you for staying on topic. On advice of our council, who is going to have to defend this if it is wrong.
It's every day.
I would ask all those in favor of the motion to rescind the vote for disc golf to signify by saying aye and raise your hand, please.
But, Mr. President, I'm sorry to stop. It is, the, the motion is out of order.
Understood. Overruled because our council said so.
But, but I'm sorry. No, it's out of order. We're the deliberative body, and it's still out of order.
On advice, on advice of council.
With all due respect to the deliberative, he is not a member of this council.
Correct. But the advice of the council is that this motion is in order.
But it isn't. It, it's not in order.
Okay.
It's not. Section 35 of Robert's Rules of Order is the entire section on rescinding a, a, a motion. Section 36 is the entire motion about, uh, about reconsideration. They, they are not interchangeable words. This council on December 8th decided that it was, not December 9th of 2024, decided that it's first order when it came to the rules of this council, that we were going to follow Robert's Rules. With all due respect to the solicitor, I'm sorry, there are two different rule, uh, two different motions.
So I'm still going to go back to anyone who is in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
All right.
Aye. Oppose? Nay. Motion passes four to three.
So can we, can we do a
The vote, the vote was four to three with counselors Patton, Reese, McDowell, and Gleason voting in affirmative, Blank, Piero, and myself voting in a negative. Would you like to make any more, um, would you like to go into your presentation or?
No, I'm
Is there anyone, I'm going to start with anybody who has not already been to the podium in the previous four meetings to discuss disc golf. If there is any new information you would like to bring forward.
Mr. President, can I just ask for clarification? What, I'm, I'm not sure what the point of public comment is that this, there's no, there's no motion pending. There's no agenda item pending on the disc golf matter that hasn't been disposed of. I, I just, just so I understand.
And, and, Mr. President, I think you did say, once the vote is taken, that's the end of the, of the discussion.
If there was a vote to reconsider, we would bring the information forward so that everyone could have a chance to discuss it.
But I guess that's what I said. I don't, I don't know if there's a motion. There's no further motion rescind. I'm sorry. I don't mean to
And I asked if there was going to be comments, if you were going to allow, and you said no.
I said no because there was going to be a vote for the rescind first. My hope was there was not going to be a vote to rescind because it's ridiculous, but we won't go Christine, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. My name is Christine Stinning, 36 Brant Road, Portsmouth. I am the president of the League of Women Voters for Newport County.
Excuse me? And are you reading the letter that you've already sent out to us that was in?
I am not.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to know that you got it because other than a late exception, no one else responded except the president. I want to make it very clear that the League of Women Voters has absolutely no position on disc golf. What we do have a position on is the democratic process. Ms. McDowell, you went on eloquently to say that you too, like the League, care about democratic process. My question to you is, since this is over a seven-month period that we've talked on all different agendas about disc golf, and you have had a concern about the democratic process of all that has happened, why is that only being stated tonight?
First of all, I do think that you have, um, information or lack of information on the process that is taking place as well in our town in terms of committee work. So
That's not my question.
Okay.
That's not my question, counselor.
Well, I don't
My, my question is, if you have been so concerned about the democratic process that has come out of this committee and around this issue, why is tonight the first time that you have said that you are concerned about the democratic process?
I was responding to a letter that you wrote in terms of the democratic process.
Correct.
That's what I was responding to, and I have been concerned with this whole process from day one.
Have you made that clear to the council and to your constituents in Portsmouth?
I think so.
Because I have not read it.
Constituents, I'm not sure. I've said it in council meetings, but, um, you know, that's, that's the difference here. When you say things in council meetings, automatically you assume that it gets to the public. Sometimes it doesn't. But I have voiced my disapproval of not only disc golf, but the process, and I think
I thought you said earlier that you didn't have a problem with disc golf. You had a problem with it at Glen.
Mr. President, let us ask again.
I'm sorry. I didn't say it, Glenn.
So
I, I can move on.
Make it quick. Just, just, General, I don't mean to address this witness specifically, but these shouldn't be question and answer periods. If the public has comment on, I'm not sure what we're commenting on at this point, but if the public has comment, it should be a comment and not a debating commentary.
I think a comment would be on the process of, of how we've gone around five times of disc golf.
And I asked that question because of what was said earlier, um, and referencing the League of Women Voters, which was inaccurate. That's why I did that.
I don't, I don't mind that.
I'm moving on. I'm moving on. Okay. Tonight is the second attempt to visit this decision that was made on September the 8th. Constantly revisiting a settled issue after a formal vote undermines the legitimacy of decision-making with this council. When the democratic process is repeatedly challenged in this way, it erodes public trust. I have read and studied the 33 slides that are being presented tonight. Quite frankly, they were very well done and looked very professional. Did you do, I, you said earlier somebody else had done them, a, a citizen had done them. But the problem with them is, is the research that was done. So here is my conundrum. Slides three, five through seven, 11 through 12, and 15 through 25 seem to be research that is not new. I went back to every meeting that, and, and listened to all people who testified, as well as read through, um, different, um, statements that were made. I did not find something in those slides that has not already been addressed. Um, and I will be happy to go back and show you where that information is. The issue and conversation around disc golf has been on agendas since December of 2024. It has been before this committee on eight 12, nine eight, and 10 27. There was no mention of the disc golf at the town council meetings at nine 22 or 10 14. I do not understand why this presentation that was put together for a PowerPoint is being brought up tonight. There were four other town councils at this meetings that could have been brought up that have not been brought up. Why are we re-presenting data that has already been presented and discussed on this issue at this time? That is not the way the democratic process works. Slide three seems to deal with the violation of the Open Meetings Act by Parks and Rec. The, the League values this check and balance for democracy, and the League of Women Voters of Rhode Island was instrumental in getting this passed in the state as law. What confuses me is how this impacted the council's ability to decide on disc golf until now. It is not germane to the argument. Slide three has no, no potential to, to make a decision on what you should or shouldn't do in the process. It's the, it's my understanding that Parks and Recs is an advisory committee, not a procedural-making committee. Also, if there was a concern about what came out of, uh, Parks and Recs, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Patton attended most, if not all, Parks and Recreation Committee meetings. If that's the case, I have no doubt she was aware of anything the council needed to know about the discussion from Parks and Recs. Since I will not have been advised not to ask questions, I would be curious to know, Ms. Patton, why you voted affirmative on a two-year contract on nine eight and tonight voted to rescind it. There is no new information that we see on this slideshow. The League is dedicated to protecting and ensuring that there is transparency, accountability, and citizen engagement that supports good government. On September 8th, after extensive consideration, hours of sitting, the council approved a two-year trial period for the creation of a disc golf course in Portsmouth. It didn't say it was going to be here forever. It didn't say it agreed with it forever. It gave it a trial period. The questions raised here tonight, my concerns, are the same ones that have been asked and answered repeatedly for months. It has become clear that the level of additional explanation and documentation demanded for the golf proposal is disproportionately burdensome and appears to apply an uneven standard. When decisions can be overturned through pressure, misinformation, persistent challenges, fake information, elected officials risk shifting from serving their broader public interest to responding only to the loudest voices. Democracy depends on accepting outcomes, even unpopular ones, and moving forward. Nothing presented tonight indicates any new data has emerged since the town council meeting on September 8th. This raises a serious concern that the integrity of the democratic process in Portsmouth is at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Stinning. Yes.
Thank you.
I have no idea how you're still wearing that coat in here.
There are a couple
I know, I know. Anyway, hey, first of all, Happy Thanksgiving. Can you hear me? Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and I am just absolutely thrilled with all Portsmouthians that showed up tonight.
Please, please, please address the council, not the
Okay, all right, well.
And I just need to name and address for the break.
All right, my name is Bonnie Billington. I live at 195 Francolo Drive, built a house there 31 years ago, and absolutely love it here, which I know most people do. Um, I used to be a flight attendant for 22 years, traveled Um, I used to be a flight attendant for 22 years, traveled all over the world, and decided to make my home here because it is such a magical place. And I think many of you that live here would agree to that. Um, all I can say, and it's going to be short and sweet, um, we live in a wonderful place, the Glen Park has been memories for many wonderful things. Whether it be games, or walking my dog, or whatever you want to do there, and it's just, there's no place like it. I hate to see it ruined, and I'm just going to say, short and sweet, I, I'm, I'm a fan of disc golf, my son introduced me to it, it's a really fun game. Um, I'm going to tell you, I'm not a good shot, and I've hit people, I've hit trees. Um, where they're, I look at the map of it, where they proposed to put it, there's a lot of low walls, there's like. Stone walls all around, and I'm just going to tell you, just knowing how I throw. I can just see them going over the fence or the wall, hitting people, hitting, hitting, um, cars, people jumping over the fence or the wall. Um, I would love to see a disc, disc golf facility here somewhere, I just don't think that's the place for it. Um, most of the disc golf places I've been to, there's a little bit of, um, maybe more of a challenge, there's, there's rocks, there's trees, there's, it's not just all open. And so all I'm going to say is, I love the idea of disc golf, I just would pursue the fact that maybe we could find a better place that's more open for it. And, um, but anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Um, we're going to go to a couple of comments online, um, can we bring up Mr. Papas, please? Steve, you can just unmute yourself, please. Doesn't matter. We have testimony from somebody on Martha's Vineyard, what's the difference with somebody who was a resident and happens to live in Florida now? Steve, you have to unmute yourself. We have him unmuted, correct? Yep. Steve, lower left-hand corner of your Zoom feed, click on the microphone, please. Alright, why don't we put Steve on hold and go with, uh, Ms. Cullen, Cullen Ann, I'm sorry, Karen. Oh, wait a minute, Steve, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
It says he's talking, but I don't hear anything, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not hearing him either.
I'm not sure if you can hear me or not, can you?
Hang on, Steve. Something tells me it's going to be very loud when he does.
I'm not sure if you can hear me or not, can you?
Any luck?
No, not yet.
Want me to give you a minute?
Yeah, give me a minute on this, yeah. Take a camera home.
But he's, he is unmuted right now, but it's just, the, the sound is not coming through. Miss Tube. He's working on it. I'm going to allow the Parks and Recreation Committee Chair to talk because it's under his. Roderick, I'm going to hold you off for a second until we get other people to talk, if you don't mind. Mr. Furell, if you want to come up and.
Yeah.
Make a quick statement about.
I, I wrote it down to stay on point.
Thank you.
Forty, David Furell, 45 Hamilton Drive. Uh, I'm going to have to change how I say some of this now, but, uh, as the Chair of the Portsmouth Parks and Recreation Committee, I'm here to express my deep concerns and disappointment. Uh, regarding the recent agenda item to rescind or reconsider the vote tonight, uh, disc golf at Glen Park. To many of us who have dedicated countless hours in this town, it feels as if the democratic process is being undermined. The effort to revisit the vote appears to be in response to a small group of opponents rather than. We could make this into a rap.
Well, it's. Fairly interesting.
It's a first for me. See, look at, we can all agree on something. Check one, two, check one, two.
You're good, you're good.
One, 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 one.
It's interesting that you echoed, but I didn't.
What's that?
You're, you're echoing, but I'm not, that's kind of weird.
Maybe it's the mic?
Oh, there we go. It came through that time. There it is. Why don't we shut down Zoom and restart it, we think that would help? I, I apologize for those who are online, but.
Because I changed it from, so it looked like you had it on echo cancel. That's where the echo was created. I'm hearing, I'm hearing someone talk right now, and I don't know where it's, it's me.